I'll call meeting in order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the city of Nebraska governing bodies. The city of Stewart advised by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act and conducted business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. Any citizen may address the council regarding items included on the meeting agenda and are asked to complete and hand in a speech or card to the clerk. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by the meeting appropriate response shall be made to see if she reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Kayler.
Here.
Coulterman.
Here.
Streisand.
Here.
Tanyas.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Francis Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
All right, thank you. The first six items this evening make of the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Second. We motion in a second. Any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
All right, our first public hearing this evening is tax increment financing TIF application by Two Creeks Holdings, 1151 South Street. We have our TIF attorney, Andrew Willis, with us this evening. Welcome, Andrew.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, Andrew Willis. Yes, the TIF attorney. The first project you have before you is...
Okay.
Two Creeks Holdings. This is... It's 1164 Elm Street, which is the south half of what was, it was just administratively replanted. So right, was 1151 South Street against your south of the highway. This project, if you'll recall, Two Creeks Holdings had a project approved, the TIF project approved several years ago, just, you know, adjacent to the north of the highway that was for the expansion of the St. PJs, the Paints Fly Company. This is just expanding that. So really, this is a new project, it really is, you know, allowing for expansion of that existing business. The project site is kind of an interesting piece of property because it's got a century sewer, it's been a stormy, it's been crossing. You can see in the pictures, the redevelopment plan. So it makes it pretty challenging to develop. But they've got the plan figured out, the building plan, it'd be on the east side of that lot. And so it works. Gives them enough space to expand their business. It is, this project site, Zone, you see, urban corridor. The future land use map is designated as commercial. So it's a permitted use, it falls within the future land use map. I would note that this project comes recommended by both the CRA and the Planning Commission. It's been through hearings on both of those bodies and they both have recommended and approved it. So again, this is just under 5,000 square foot building, a 4,960 foot square, a square foot building. And again, it's shop, storage, warehouse for the expansion of that existing, that existing business. Total cost, $458,000 roughly. More than $92,000 of TIF eligible costs identified. Based on the valuation, I'll run through that in a second, the TIF amount requested is $77,045 on the $458,000 project. Anticipated construction would start this year, start this summer, and be completed next year, summer of 2026. So, again, based on the anticipated valuation of $410,000 for the final valuation, kind of based on the existing properties and the estimates from the Seward County Assessor, that that would, in the current value, is $54,000 on the lot. So that's going to, that's where we're going to get that increment of roughly, just under, roughly $350,000. And then over 15 years, that's going to yield to $77,000. Again, this fits, it fits in really well with some of the pieces we looked at because, again, it really is, even though it's a separate project, it really is an expansion of that, of that existing, you know, the existing business. There's no public acquisition or disposal of property. The redevelopers bought this site a couple of years ago, July of 2022, for this purpose, for the purpose of development. The, with a commercial building, we're not worried about population density. It's going to meet all the necessary land coverage issues. Again, it's about 4,900 square foot building on a 20,000 square foot lot. And half of that lot's got some easements they can't build on, so they fitted them to make it work. It's right on Highway 35, shouldn't have any negative, no anticipated negative traffic flow issues or anything like that. And again, it's permitted under the zoning and they're, redevelopers responsible for all other, all other zoning subdivision issues like that. It's already been through the subdivision. Fits well within the comprehensive plan, including, the comprehensive plan, I noted a couple of things in here. Identifying potential solutions to overcome barriers to retention and expansion of existing businesses. Encouraging the creation of complementary business clusters to reduce operational costs, promote business growth, and develop businesses along Highway 34 and the use of TIF. So, again, fits in pretty well there. If you look at Exhibit B, that's our TIF sources and uses, and we kind of ran through those. But based on the certain, that base value of $54,000, if this goes up to that completed value of $410,000, we have our $355,000, $356,000 increment, which gives us $5,136 of tax increment every year for 15 years. So with that $77,000, it's going to cover part of those uses listed below. Site acquisition, grading, site preparation, water sewer improvements to the site, architectural engineering fees, and some legal fees. So, so again, all pretty standard, pretty standard TIF uses. And I guess I'll run from that into the redevelopment agreement itself and then, I'm happy to take any specific questions. But again, the redevelopment agreement, as you've seen before, this takes what we just went through in the plan and puts it into the contract. So we've got an effective date, and the effective date on this is going to be either, we have set it as either January 1st of '26 or '27. Because if they start construction now and build through till next summer, the question is going to be, is there going to be a new valuation as of January 1st of '26? We don't know that yet, we won't know that yet, so the contract's just built in so that we'll take a look in '26 and make sure we, we divide the taxes at the right time to get the increment. And again, it's got that TIF, you know, the $77,000 of TIF. And otherwise, I think this agreement, I don't think there's anything in particular I need to point out that's unusual or different than what you're used to seeing. So otherwise, I think it's pretty standard. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the project or the documents.
Did you real quick, so you've covered A. Do you think you want to add for B and C? Are those included in your, in your presentation for A?
So, yeah, I guess, what I, yeah, so I kind of went over everything in A. And then, based on that, then, yeah, you can make your resolutions on B and C.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything under B and C.
Nope, that should cover all the information you need.
So is there any initial questions or comments from the council before we go to public comment? Saying none, now go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward at this time and do so. Yes, go ahead. Come, come on up. Just fill out that card when you're done and give it to Derek at some point tonight.
Certainly. I'm Mike Lewis, the owner of St. PJ, or one of the owners, me and my wife own St. PJ Supply and Two Creeks Holdings. Appreciate you guys taking time tonight. If there's any questions about the project or anything that anybody want to answer, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We did our first TIF project in 2015 or '16 with a white building, or just across the street. And then we followed up with a second warehouse and we did that in 2018. So this is our third TIF thing that we've had. We've never had any of them really run behind or being improperly evaluated. I think the taxes have pretty much exceeded it every year after the first or second year. And I think with property valuations changing again, we probably actually underestimated TIF on this probably slightly. But, but that's kind of what I have. I think when we started, and I appreciate the city's part of the TIF, we started in 2015 on our thing, and I think we went across the street with seven employees, maybe like 21. So, so it's been very helpful to our company growing. Any questions?
We really appreciate your commitment and your investment in the community. Are there any questions?
Well, I just wanted to say thanks for your investment.
Saying no questions, you got off easy tonight.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward at this time. If there is no one else, then I will close the public comment portion for this hearing on this item. And return to council for any further discussion or questions you may have. We have two resolutions. So if you'd like to, on item one B, you can introduce the resolution when you are ready.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay. All right. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2025-17. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved. Second.
We motion in a second. Any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
And again, for item one C, if there's any questions or comments from the council, otherwise I'd ask someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2025-18. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved.
Second.
We motion in a second. Any further discussion? Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
All right, thank you. And thank you. Item two is also a public hearing for tax increment financing TIF application by Dairy Processing, 1143 and 1144 Worthman Boulevard. Welcome back, Andrew.
Thank you. Second, this, this project you have before you now, again, note from the beginning, this has been through CRA, recommending approval, and it's approved the project, and then Planning Commission also has made the recommendation for approval. This is the next, this, in the rail campus, I'm sure you've seen this in various different forms of the project. So for the TIF portion itself, I'll run through the pieces, then, I think the one thing that's worth noting on here, so, because I'll start just, you know, we'll take it, this is the, obviously it's in the rail campus, we've got the redevelopment plan that we put together for the rail campus. This falls very well with, in line with that. So this is an amendment to that plan. But obviously, the future company, the future land use is set up as industrial, it's meant to, really, this is kind of what the redevelopment plan was made to bring in. So I can go into that more, but it's, I think that we've, that you've seen that plan before in several phases. The one thing I would mention here is, this site is currently outside of city limits. And both at CRA, we mentioned it, CRA and Planning Commission, but the CRA's area of operation is corporate limits. So what we've done, and what we've done here, there's two ways to do this. There's one statute that allows you to kind of reach outside and under certain circumstances. I think those are probably all met here. But we decided we don't need to do that since it's in the process of annexation at this point. So what we've, what we've said in this plan and in the agreement is that, and part of the resolution that would be passed is, if the project for some reason is not annexed into the city, then it would be void and this wouldn't go forward. So, so as you make the, as you vote on the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement tonight, that is probably the key thing is that it does acknowledge that it's not, that you'd have to have the annexation to make this valid within the CRA's area of operation for TIF. So if you choose to, that won't have to come back, is essentially what I'm saying. It's set up as a contingency in the agreement. But taking care to make sure we're following all the community development law rules. So on this one, so this is a 240,000 square foot commercial building, bottling facility, cold, empty warehouse, storage facilities for a much larger scale milk processing facility. Same, similar timeline, it's going to start this year, anticipated to finish up first quarter of 2027. So again, we're looking at the division date either being '26 or '27, similar to what I mentioned on Two Creeks Holdings. Base value of the site right now is $1,166,300. The anticipated value, and again, this is from the Seward County Assessor, $41,152,420. So total project costs are over $186 million. So it's a, it's a large project. One of the questions that came up at CRA was, are they spending $186 million on the project, how come we're getting a value of $41 million? I think part of that is that some of that's personal property, you know, the equipment in there that doesn't count as real estate value. Some of it is just the way that large scale warehouses is valued. But again, that came from the county assessor, which I think is the best possible estimate we can get, so we take that and use that. Based on a $41 million completed valuation, this project can support $8,655,500 in TIF. They've identified more than $16 million in TIF uses. So we have site acquisition, site preparation, grading, wastewater treatment, the pre-treatment to, to, you know, that's a pretty big benefit to the city. So that's, but that's about an $8 million cost they're incurring, architectural engineering and legal fees, and some facade and energy enhancement, efficiency improvements. So, again, very similar TIF uses to what you're seeing, nothing really out of the ordinary at all. And while there's $16 million identified of TIF uses, we got about $8.6 million that will be supported by this project. So it is potentially up to 70 new jobs in the rail campus. Again, it's permitted use in the, in the zoning. And, you know, it's part of, it's part of the overall build. So, yeah, it's going to increase some traffic, it's going to, you know, increase some jobs. But that's kind of the goal of this overall rail campus development. So we see that all as positives in our cost benefit analysis. And, let's see what else I need to note on this one for you. As I mentioned, it's probably all falls really well within what's lined up for the rail campus redevelopment and TIF uses. So I'll jump over to the redevelopment agreement real fast. Again, everything should flow from that redevelopment plan. Effective date of either January 1, '26 or '27, depending on where the valuation falls. And we'll expect that minimum valuation of $41,152,420 to support that TIF. $8,655,500 in TIF. And, I doubt. And just, just to reiterate, the very last section of the redevelopment agreements, that were that contingency that says, if this is not annexed, then even though this agreement's approved, that's a condition precedent. So if it's not annexed, then it is just terminated and void. So nothing to worry about there. And I think that's probably the big picture, what you need to know from me, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Andrew. Any questions or comments from the council? You've covered A, B, and C?
Yeah.
Okay. If nothing urgent, we're going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing on item two. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item, please come forward at this time and, one at a time? Both of you, together? You draw the short straw.
I'll just best move it. Hi, I'm Brett Rusher, I'm CFO, just coming for the Toll Stanley, the one who's here today. So on behalf of them, I'm here. Excited to be a part of Seward and the community. I think most of you probably know, see some of you probably tomorrow. So we're excited to be here. I don't have a big speech or anything prepared for you, but any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer them right now. And one of our new hires is a Seward guy, so Brock's here as well. So he's one of my, one of my recent hires, and glad that he's a part of the team.
Well, again, we're very, you know, happy to welcome you to our community, and I will probably see you tomorrow.
Promise.
Any questions from the council? Thanks again. Did you want to say anything?
Uh, he just forgot it.
You got it?
I guess.
You bet. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else, then I will go ahead and close the public comments portion of the public hearing on item number two. And return to council for any further discussion. Like the previous TIF hearing, we would, on items B and C, there are resolutions that would require introduction.
I'll introduce the resolution.
On item B, the resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2025-19. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move that we pass and adopt it.
Second. We motion in a second. Is any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
And again, for item two C, we need someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2025-20. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved. Second.
We motion in a second. Is any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening. All right, item three is also a public hearing, tax increment financing, TIF application by Good Life Limited, DBA Parker Baby Company at 1027 Worthman Boulevard. Welcome back, Andrew.
All right, if you're not tired of me yet, one more time. Couple notes off the bat on this one, from the application to the documents. So as you mentioned, this was, we have this as Good Life DBA Parker Baby. So that was the name they were intending to use, not sure if it was, however, it ran through the Secretary of State, they had some issues. So just as, as we go through this note, then what we've done here is Sam Heebner, who is one of the owners, not here tonight, but was one of the owners. What we've done is we've set up the agreement in his name as to be assigned to the, to the entity owned by Sam McPearson. Just so, it's coming at just as, at least as of when we finished up the Planning Commission, they had, they were still finishing up that LLC. So just noting that from application, that the name will change, but the ownership and everything, everything else will be the same. The other thing worth noting off the bat is similar to Dairy, but a little bit different. Half of this project is currently within corporate limits, half of it's not. So, and again, I think that under a community development law, if we wanted to, we could pull that in and say it's reasonably necessary for the entire project. But since it's currently in the annexation, in the process of annexation, what we've said is, in this plan and in the redevelopment agreement is, the TIF will not be used on any portion of the property outside of the corporate limits. Assuming it will be annexed in, but if it's not, then we'll have a TIF district on only half of the lot. And before you ask, how do we do that? I think the answer is, the assessor will be mad at us for having to deal with it, but we can, but it can be done. I've seen it in Lincoln before. Hopefully, we don't get there. But that's, just again, to make sure we're not trying, we're not doing anything outside of the CRA's area of operation. So again, in this plan, the amendment to the redevelopment plan, again, this is the rail campus, so it's going to be very similar. It falls, you know, very well within the rail campus redevelopment plan, similar to the Dairy Processing project you just saw. And this is a approximately 25,000 square foot commercial warehouse facility, 3,200 square feet of office. And this is really a manufacturing fulfillment business, facility for, for the related e-commerce businesses, the Parker Baby and Tall Slim is, you know, their, their e-commerce businesses. So this really allows them to bring their, things that they'd otherwise, you know, use third parties for, bring it all in-house, and then bring it to Seward, into the rail campus, to do their fulfillment, their warehousing, all the pieces of this overall business. It is approximately $4.6 million investment overall, total project costs. Base value currently is $182,000 of that site. Again, based on the estimates from the Seward County Assessor, the anticipated final valuation is $1,940,342. So with that $1.9 million valuation, we can utilize, it'll support $380,500 in TIF. Again, here we've got about $900,000 of eligible TIF between site acquisition, site prep, grading, and the architectural engineering fees. So lots of uses, and this will cover about $38,500 of those out of that $4.6 million project. Permitted use, kind of in line with what was intended in the, in the rail campus redevelopment plan. So nothing particularly to note there, other than whatever we noted. Create up to 10, up to 10 full-time jobs with this project. And one of the questions that was asked at CRA, they were asking about traffic. And, I'm curious to talk to more if she needs to, but what, what the CRA was told was, it's, the shipping and fulfillment is really the equivalent of some, I mean, it's UPS trucks. So it'd be the equivalent of, of somebody doing their own heavy business on eBay or, you know, whatever. So while there's, there's shipping, it's not a significant, it's not going to be a, it's not going to be a large amount of traffic in and out of this property. It's going to be your UPS deliveries once a day and FedEx and that stuff. So, so it's a, you know, traffic and the location is important, but it's not going to put a, it's not going to put a substantial burden on traffic. Those were the questions that were asked. Otherwise, I think it fits really well within the redevelopment plan. It's set up for the, for the rail campus area. So they're looking to have the redevelopment agreement. Again, very similar, we've got our effective date set up to be either January 1 of '26 or '27, based on what that valuation is next year because they're going to be building summer to next year. Minimum valuation to support that TIF amount is $1,940,362. We've got the TIF amount, we're going to, and again, that's $380,623. The redevelopment agreement just notes that we are using TIF only within corporate limits, whatever corporate limits may look like once this project is going. And, and I think, let's see if there's anything else I need to note to you? I don't think so. Otherwise, I think it's kind of straightforward, looks pretty, I guess we'll call it typical for that area. But I'm happy to answer your questions, yeah.
Thanks, Andrew. Any questions or comments from the council? If not at this time, I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to comment on this item, please come forward at this time. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kristen Heebner, and I am the co-founder of Parker Baby Co. I want to start off by apologizing that my husband's not here. He's our CEO. He wishes he could be here, but his mom is having back surgery, and so he thought it would be best if he was with her. During this time, we are incredibly excited about this opportunity to relocate both our families and our business back to, back to Seward. After 13 years in Colorado, I'm personally really excited to be back home. And this community just really means a lot to me. This project represents a significant investment on both our family and our company. Over the past couple of years, we have explored several locations across the region, and time and time again, we just were brought back to Seward. While we, while we considered repurposing existing buildings with the TIF up financing, we are, we will be able to develop something that will help us now and into the future. At Parker Baby, our vision is to nurture and grow small, strong families, and we believe this aligns beautifully with Seward. And we're eager to contribute, not just through the business, but through expanding our team locally and getting involved as a family. I'd be happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability. Thank you for your time.
Again, thank you for your commitment and investment in the community. We're excited to welcome your business here, so.
We're really excited. Really excited. Got some, some of the original Parker Baby team here.
Research and development.
Yeah, exactly. The models. If you ever see some of our product photography when they're babies, they're around, yeah.
Have any questions or comments from the council? If not, thank you again. And with that, we'll just, we'll just get going here. Andrew, did you have anything else? Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? If not, then I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and return to council for any discussion, or if anyone would like to introduce the resolution.
Well, I'll introduce the resolution, but I also want to say welcome back.
Oh, thanks. I'm so excited. I'm excited to give my kids the same experience I got, so.
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced. This is item three B, and it designated as Resolution Number 2025-21. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move. Second.
We motion in a second. Is any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Morgan, seven zero.
And again, for item three C?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2025-22. Would anyone like to move... Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'm moved.
Second. A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowell, Kayler, Tanya's Coltrane, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, seven zero.
Again, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew. Alright, next we move on to item number four, also a public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance rezoning property identified as lot one, cruisy acres from AG Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District. Welcome.
Evening, Council Mayor, now that you guys are done listening to Andrew, it's Mike here. What we have is an application to rezone, I'm sorry, to, yes, rezone a residential property in the ETJ. Currently, there was a one acre property that was non-conforming there, uh, did not meet the five acres for rural residential. This property was left to the Lincoln Community Center, uh, to manage the property and do what they need to do to sell off this property. So, they rezoned into eight point one eight acres, the current, uh, residence there, plus the one acre lot that was non-conforming, to make it, to meet the five acre conforming, and then left, I don't know, a hundred and fifty-some acres of farmland, uh, to be sold off later. Chip DeBuse, who is not here this evening, is the managing, uh, individual for the Lincoln Community Foundation, and he just wanted us to reiterate that this property was left to them to manage, and is ultimately to be sold and donated, the funds donated to future development of the wellness center. So, that's what they're managing this for, and that's, that's their end goal. With that, the planning commission did approve a minor plat, uh, for the eight point one eight acres of the remaining farmland. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, it was recommended six zero, by the way.
Thank you, any questions or comments from the council? It is a public hearing, so I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item, please come forward at this time and approach the podium. One at a time. Alright, with that, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing, return the council for any further discussion. By the way, did I ask someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Alright, the, alright. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to rezone certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Seward, Nebraska, now zoned AG Agricultural District, the RR Rural Residential, specifically tracts of land south of Bluff Road and east of three hundred eighth road, to describe the property rezoned, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, and it's designated as ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, and the title is hereby approved. Need a motion to dispense with statutory rule?
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowell, Kayler, Tanya's Coltrane, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, seven zero.
Uh, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
I'm moved, second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowell, Kayler, Tanya's Coltrane, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, seven zero.
And this is the only ordinance this evening, so only one final motion to make the ordinance a part of the permanent record.
I'll move that it become part of the permanent record.
Second, a motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor Francis Cowell, Kayler, Tanya's Coltrane, Singleton, Streisand, Warden, seven zero.
Alright, thank you. Um, item number five, also a public hearing, consideration of an application for a special use permit to allow for a telecommunications tower located in the south half of the northeast quarter of section twenty-two, township eleven north, range three east of the six PM, and zone AG Agricultural District, welcome.
Thank you, this is a request, uh, to install a two hundred and forty-five foot, uh, cell tower in our ETJ just to the east of Seward. Uh, in your packet, I don't know if it made it, there was a letter, um, requesting as part of the, uh, approval that they be exempt from the landscaping requirement. Uh, we notified them that, uh, that, that's not a decision that could be made at planning commission, that they'd have to go forward and petition board of adjustment for that variance on that end. There was also an engineering letter in there, um, explaining a seventy-five foot fall zone. The tower would crumple into pieces rather than fall over at two hundred and forty-five feet. Uh, that was in an effort to reduce the setback from the north property line. So, instead of a hundred foot, or a hundred percent fall zone, the full two hundred and forty-five feet, they were only eighty-five feet from the property line. With those two items, uh, the planning commission had a, a couple of issues, the first being the fall zone. Uh, even though it, the, the letter stated the seventy-five foot, uh, crumple for the tower, um, they were concerned that what if it fell at ninety feet, or, or eighty-five feet? It didn't meet the seventy-five foot to make fall on the property owner anyway. The second issue they had was co-location of the antennas. Why did there need to be a separate independent tower at two hundred and forty-five foot put in the ETJ? Why couldn't they use existing towers that were around, or even our water tower? Uh, the planning commission felt that they didn't go far enough in explaining, uh, why that couldn't be done. Thirdly, there was, uh, a fair amount of concern about RF wavelength health concerns. Uh, Chairman Wallman did explain that that was a non-issue, that the FCC governed that, uh, and that there's rules and regulations for that. So, they, they didn't give much consideration to that. Uh, originally, I received an email that there would be no, uh, representation, uh, for Vertical Bridge on this. Uh, in the eleventh hour this afternoon, I received a call from Woody Crowe, who is present, who is with, uh, Buell Consulting for this project. Um, told me he was gonna be here, and so he is here to answer questions. With this, the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit failed. Uh, it was zero four and six against to approve this conditional use permit.
Alright, thank you, uh, any initial questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, then I'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward to the podium and fill out a card, a card when you're finished, thank you.
Good evening, uh, council member there.
Welcome.
Uh, Woody Crowe, uh, working with Buell Consulting, we represent the applicant in this, uh, for this special use. Just wanna touch on a couple of items and reiterate a little bit of the, uh, things that were discussed at the, uh, planning commission meeting. Landscaping, we have since decided that after my further consultation with Mr. Dwarak, we, uh, determined we're gonna proceed with the, the, so, uh, the code required landscaping, so that's a non-issue now. Um, RF safety, RF emissions, uh, as Mr. Dwarak, uh, touched on, the FCC retains sole jurisdiction over the safety of RF frequencies, and their power limits, and all network operators must adhere to those rules at the risk of their licenses being revoked by the FCC. T-Mobile will comply with the FCC's guidelines with respect to the operation of their licensed RF spectrum. And, uh, any additional carrier that might co-locate on the tower would have to, have to do the same. Regarding the, uh, engineering certificate we provided, uh, for the reduced fall zone, um, uh, we provided that, uh, that letter. Uh, it was questioned at the, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, not by a structural engineer, as far as we know. We contend that the letter provided suffices to demonstrate that this tower will not fall onto neighboring parcels. And any thoughts or opinions as, otherwise should be fairly backed by another structural engineer's formal opinion, refuting the contents of our letter, without, uh, such formal review denying that our letter is satisfactory, is unfair and arbitrary, uh, in our, uh, from our perspective. The least disruptive solution, co-location. We, uh, we provided, uh, uh, coverage maps, I don't know if they made it to y'all's package, but we demonstrated the hole in our coverage, in T-Mobile's coverage, and how this tower would fill that hole. While it would be the least disruptive to not build a new tower, we wish to reiterate that this proposed tower site is not just the least disruptive solution to fulfill the coverage and, more importantly, capacity needs of T-Mobile's network. As I explained at the planning commission meeting, it is the only solution to fill, fulfill those network needs. We exhaustively searched for a location on a willing landowner's property that would work. There are no existing structures that will do the job. There was lots of discussion about a tower about a mile, one point seven miles north, northeast of our proposed site. That's the only tower nearby that's as tall as, as needed, but at one point seven miles away, it's too far away. I did get an email from T-Mobile today, uh, confirming that, I don't have anything formal yet from them, but we're working on that. That is the only existing tower, like I said, that meets the height. Uh, was mentioned at the planning commission meeting that Verizon seems to be making it work. Verizon seems to be making it work with other towers around Seward. Perhaps Verizon will be joining this tower in the future to help cover the city more effectively. None of us in this room can say one way or the other, not even me, but it could happen. That's the same level of certainty the planning commission had by suggesting there's some other solution out there. This is a real proposal, what we're, what we're, uh, applying for is a real proposal, don't fix a real problem. Uh, we need all requirements of the code, other than that setback issue for which we provided a cogit fall zone letter. Therefore, we respectfully ask for your approval this evening. However, uh, if, uh, the city council plans on, uh, denying us, we'd, uh, we'd respectfully request a tabling, uh, for a month or two, while we gather more information from Verizon and the tower company to, uh, address the concerns that the planning commission had.
Where do you meant T-Mobile on that, right?
Did I say T-Mobile?
No, you said Verizon, I think you mean T-Mobile.
Mix of, mix of my carriers, thank you for correcting me, yes, for T-Mobile. While we gather more information from T-Mobile, uh, regarding, uh, the lack of co-location possibilities.
Thank you, any questions or comments from the council?
I have a lot of questions. So, as I understood it, there was no representation from the company at the planning commission, is that correct?
That was me.
You were there?
Yes.
You were at the planning commission? Okay.
At, at first, like Tim said, I sent him an email saying I wasn't gonna be here tonight, but at the eleventh hour, Vertical Bridge changed their mind, so, you know.
So.
I happened to be in Lincoln anyway, so, you know.
So, you, so you're a representative for, you're a consultant that goes in and represents cell phone companies with these tower locations, is that?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a similar job.
It is confusing, trust me, I'm, I'm confused every day.
That's why I'm asking.
So, so, uh, uh, T-Mobile's driving the project, they partnered with, uh, Vertical Bridge, VBPTS three LLC, and, and the application is Vertical Bridge, uh, a little easier to say, roll out the tongue. Vertical Bridge hires, uh, the, the, well, back up, T-Mobile have partnered with, uh, Vertical Bridge to find a location to, uh, for a new cell site for T-Mobile.
Okay.
So, they, T-Mobile would be the anchor tenant on the tower. If it was built, uh, Vertical Bridge hires a company I work for, Buell Consulting, to be the site acquisition.
Okay, so, I believe we have some neighbors here who are gonna wanna talk tonight, and that's great, it's part of the process. I guess my question is, before, and you may not know the answer, since you're the consultant, but did they go in and have conversations with the neighbors prior to this coming to planning commission?
Right, well, so, I had lots of conversations with, uh, Mr. Dwarak and Mr. Butcher, and, and, uh, with Mr. Whistler from the airport, leading up to, uh, this filing, uh, one of the things I requested, uh, it might have been from Sarah, uh, uh, in the office with Tim, was, was there any neighborhood organizations that I needed to contact?
Well.
Uh, there was none provided.
We're such a small town, we don't actually have neighborhood organizations.
Right, well, in, in any case, we met the code requirement of sending the letters and, and advertising, uh, uh, for the meetings that we've been at, so.
No, and I, I, I understand that, I was thinking more along the lines of like, did you meet with neighbors, like go door to door, that type of thing?
No, we went, we met the code requirements and.
Is that something you typically do? You don't typically meet with neighbors?
Not unless there's an organized group, that we were not made aware of any organized group.
I don't know that there is an organized group.
So, that's probably why we didn't meet.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking, like, trying to understand your process. Um, okay, that was one of my questions. My second question, I guess, is related to the, help me understand this co-locating issue, because I'm not familiar with it.
Right, so, many times, well, co-location is, is technically, T-Mobile would be co-locating on Vertical Bridge's tower. Somebody owns a tower, somebody else comes along and wants to put their antennas on it, they'd co-locate on that tower. If the tower gets built, T-Mobile goes on there, three years down the road, Verizon's looking around, oh, we need a site on the east side of Seward.
Partner on that as well?
Then Verizon would rent space from T-Mobile and co-locate on that tower. A lot of times when you see towers, well, well, right out here is an example, is the water tank, there's cellular antennas on there. They, those cellular antennas are technically co-located on that water tank.
Okay, so, one of the things that I'm understanding is kind of in a pushback is, why did you find a tower to co-locate on rather than building new towers?
Right, so that's why we provided the coverage maps to the planning commission, showing Verizon's existing sites surrounding this particular location we're proposing.
Okay.
And we showed the coverage with and without the new tower. And it's very clear that the new tower's gonna fill in the hole between three or four surrounding T-Mobile sites.
Are we, am I missing the map in the packet?
The map may have not made it into the packet.
Okay.
In, in previous conversations with cell towers, my understanding is, every company has their engineers that have their, their pattern of towers across an area, and as the technology advanced, in many cases from, like, analog to digital, to the various Gs, is those circles actually started getting smaller, and so you typically need more towers then to fill in those gaps. I can tell you, when I was in college going to Lincoln, I could tell you exactly where the line was on highway thirty-four between the digital and the analog tower, 'cause that's where I stopped getting cell, cell service, um, on the weekends. And so, uh, is that a fair, so it's sort of, is that a fair, I guess, con, comment as far as the challenges that your companies faces? As the technology gets better, it actually doesn't have the reach?
Yes, so to make, you, that you, that was an excellent explanation, I would say. I would add, uh, the typical boiled down generic, uh, way I explain it is, you know, you have this tower and you have that tower along the interstate. They're, they're ten miles apart. With three G, the coverage area is connected, and you'd go down the interstate and not lose coverage, like you said, you were losing it. When they, when they went to four G, the coverage area shrinks because of the radio frequencies that are used for the different technologies. Newer technology, I, I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence, but, you know, cell phones are radio waves. Different frequencies have different characteristics, some of them travel long distances well, but they don't penetrate into buildings. Some of them travel short distances, but they penetrate better into buildings. So, and that's the five G, that's, does the penetrating better, but doesn't travel long distances. So, you're right, so when they upgrade the towers that used to connect with their coverage areas, the new coverage areas are smaller, so guess what? Need a new site in the middle to fill that hole.
Okay, I guess the, the next question, I just wanna understand, so you said you, you didn't find any coexisting, I understand that part. So, then you, the problem, I just. So then you, the process, I'm just trying to understand the process, then this company approaches a landowner and says, we're looking at your land, we wanna put it here, do you wanna enter into that agreement with us and lease us the land, or is that how it works?
That's a very good explanation, yes. So, co-location, there's two reasons co-location won't work. There's no towers near enough and no towers tall enough. The tower that's tall enough, which I was talking about earlier, is too far away to fill the gap that Verizon has, or T-Mobile.
We got you.
So, so, so what, what happens is, the first thing I do, before I even contact landowners, is contact the jurisdiction to see what the rules are, research the ordinance on your website, all of that stuff, have conversations, letting Tim or his counterpart at whatever city I'm looking, here's what I'm working on, you know. So after those initial discussions and researching the ordinance, there's no parcel in the city limits of Seward that can meet the zoning requirements for this proposed tower. So once, once the city was eliminated, we looked in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which of course has, you know, agricultural zones, larger, larger tracts and such. So I contacted 15 landowners. As it turned out, the only interested one in the end was the one where we are, and, and that fills the hole, works for T-Mobile, so that's why we proceeded with that.
So it's a willing, it's a willing landowner?
Yes.
It's not like you're coming in with eminent?
Yeah, we have a lease.
Yeah, it's not like you're coming in with like eminent domain or something, saying you have to have a cell tower, okay?
No, we, the key, the number one key after zoning is willing landowner.
Okay.
And we had, and that's, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that, and that was the question.
Any other questions?
Nope, that's it for now.
Any other questions from the council? With that, I will go on to the other, other public members, or the rest of the public, I guess, for comments. Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward at this time and fill out a card when you're finished, and you give it to Derek over here. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Gina Germer, my husband Joel Germer. Well, first of all, the homeowners association, people that were at last week's meeting were unable to attend tonight, they have sent me a statement they would like read to you all.
Which homeowners association?
Ridge Run.
Okay.
So I'll read their, their statement. The Ridge Run neighborhood consists of 70 homes. Our residents have chosen Ridge Run because of our location, large lots, and beautiful country views. These, these expensive views will no doubt be hindered with the construction of this telecommunications tower. The simulated photos that we have received seem very misleading, considering that there is an existing tower just a couple of miles to our north.